Good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of March 7, 2018. As always, I'd like to remind you that this meeting is being broadcast live. It's also being recorded for use at another time. Thank you all for coming. The weather outside is a little bit difficult. But the superintendent is assuring me that we have school tomorrow.
I didn't say that. I'm having a phone call with Mr. Sandland around 4:30 in the morning. That's the plan. We'll see what it looks like.
Okay, as we start every meeting, I'd ask you to please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. You'll also please join me in a pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, "One Nation, Under God, Indivisible, with Liberty and Justice for All."
Again, thank you all for coming. The superintendent will be sending a message out whether we have school or not tomorrow after a 4 o'clock conference call, so.
I'll send it out if we're not. I'm not going to send it out if we are.
Okay. Everybody hear that? If there's no school, you'll hear from us. If you don't hear, definitely the school.
Come on down.
They're still going to post anyways, so.
Okay, an entertaining motion to approve the minutes of February 28, 2018.
So moved. Second.
Discussion.
Yes, I'm going to make changes. I already told Michelle on the executive coming out, we needed the names and people. Just listen as first.
Thank you.
Is that amending?
Yes, amending.
Motion to amend?
Yes, motion to amend.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on the amendment?
What do you amend?
Yeah, what did?
Coming out of executive session, it was blank.
The vote called.
We had a roll call to come out and it was blank.
The motion and the second. I didn't miss that.
Discussion, all those in favor? Okay, entertaining motion to approve the minutes as amended.
So moved. Second.
Discussion, all those in favor? Okay, this evening we will not be having a student advisory because our student council rep, Marra Burrit, is on assignment at a student council conference in Hyannis. So she gets off the hook tonight. She doesn't have to give us a report, and I hope she's learning something down in Hyannis. Thank you. Superintendent's report.
Thank you. We're going to begin this evening with our Project 351 recognition. We did this last year just about this time. And as you see, you've got some wonderful young people in front of you, and they are Project 351 ambassadors and Project 351 alums. Project 351 is a program that began in 2011, and it began in looking for eighth graders from the 351 cities and towns in Massachusetts. And the idea was to celebrate the life and work of Martin Luther King Jr. in January of that year by having an eighth grader from each of the middle schools in Massachusetts come to Boston to do service learning in memorance and celebration of Martin Luther King Jr. That program has now evolved into a program that not only involves Martin Luther King Weekend, which is called Launch Day in January, but also includes spring service and fall service, and embedded in all of this is community service and leadership training. This all began, a woman named Carolyn Casey, who just happens to be Bill Trantor's first cousin, is the person who had this idea, went to the governor at that time, who was Duval Patrick, and the program has evolved to this level. In the spring, they'll go to Gillette Stadium. In January, we went to the Kennedy Library, and we had the opportunity to see Mr. Boyce there, which was really exciting this year as well. So this year, I was able to be a chaperone, like I was last year. It was supposed to happen, Martin Luther King Weekend, however, we had bad weather, and we went the end of January and had an absolutely fabulous day. So what I'd like to do is have our students introduce themselves and talk about what grade they're in now, and maybe a little bit about Project 351. So Christopher, I think you're on the end. Why don't you start? Thank you.
All right. Hi, everybody. I'm Chris. I'm a freshman here, and Project 351 is just honestly one of the best experiences I've ever had. Still very young in the program, but I love going through with everything, and it's just incredible to have the feeling of helping the community and people that you don't even know, but you know need help. So this spring, coming up actually really soon, is our spring service. So me personally and a few of my partners and friends over here, we're going to start our annual clothing drive for Cradles to Crayons. So I'm planning to do something very similar to what I did last year, and just go to the schools and major community organizations such as the churches and, I don't know, maybe Regal or something, to try to get community places to help out with our spring service this year. So I'm looking forward to working with as many people as want to work with me, and I just can't wait to see where it's going to go.
Thank you so much, Chris. Appreciate it. Yes, next, Gabby.
Hi, my name is Gabrielle Trongone, and I am a junior at Whitman Hansen. My experience with Project 351 has been life-changing because it kind of opens you up to like the real world and everything else that goes on, that more people need help, and that there's always a lending hand to give. And when you give that lending hand, people give it back. So it just like is uplifting, and I believe in the butterfly effect, that one act of kindness leads to another. So once someone spreads an act of kindness, it would lead to another, and Project 351 really encompasses that, and I really love that about it.
Where did you do your community service when you were in eighth grade?
Eighth grade, I did it at my middle school.
Mm-hmm.
Oh. I did it at Hanson Middle School, and I did a clothing drive there and a canned food drive there.
That's terrific.
And then in ninth grade, 10th grade, and in 11th grade now, I've done my canned food drive and my clothing drives here for Cradles to Crayons. So yeah. And then I'm going to hold my clothing drive at a church now for this year and at the school at Whitman Hansen. So I'm excited, and yeah.
Thank you, Gabby.
Thank you. Okay, Annika.
I'm Annika Pooter. I'm currently a junior at Whitman Hansen. I represented Whitman Middle School when I was in eighth grade, and I've currently and since eighth grade, I've been collecting food for the food pantry at my church. And it's definitely been an eye-opener to see how much people are not only in need, but how much people will give for those people in need. And I've been working with fellow ambassadors, and it's definitely, when I went to the launch when I was in eighth grade, I met so many different people on how not only have they experienced it in their own town, but and also they also realize how a difference, not only just a little bit from one person can affect, but if you come together as a community, it can also be a greater difference for our communities.
Thank you, Annika.
Thank you, Annika.
Emma?
Hi, I'm Emma Rogers. I'm a 9th grader at Whitman Hansen, and I can just say that Project 351 is truly the most fulfilling and inspiring experience a kid my age could take part in. Last year was like amazing. In spring service, I did a clothing drive at Hanson Middle School through my dance studio, Boss Academy, and through the St. Joseph the Worker Church in Hanson, and it was really successful. And I just have to be grateful for Courtney because it was her first year as an alumni leader last year, and she really helped me like and guided me through the whole process. And speaking of being grateful, Project 351 really taught me to express gratitude to all the people that help you along the way, because every little thing really matters. So you have to show your appreciation for all the people who help you, and I can't wait to do it this year doing spring service. And I did fall service this fall, and we used the high school soccer program to help, and we collected cans at football games here at the high school. So thank you. I just love Project 351.
Thank you, Emma. Ally?
Hi, my name is Ally Ayers, and I'm an 8th grader at Whitman Middle School. I can honestly say that at the beginning, when I first found out what Project 351 is, it inspired me because I had no idea that so many people, just so many people were in need, that I truly did not understand how many people needed our help. And so this year, on March 26, I'm holding a sock drive at our school because I soon learned that Project 351 needs socks and clothing and all like food. So, and at the beginning, when I first learned that I was the ambassador, I was very scared for Launch Day. I'm not going to lie. And then, once I got to Launch Day, I was very excited. I was very happy that I was there, and it was truly eye-opening to see all the amazing work that so many people do.
Great. Thank you, Ally.
Thank you.
Ally and I were both at Pine Street Inn, and it was just amazing. Did you take a tour of Pine Street, too? It was just, it's an incredible experience. We make blankets. What else did we do? Put little, made little kits for people who were homeless, did a variety of things. Did you bake? We made food. Did you do that in one of your, down in the kitchen? There were a variety of things to do, but it was a great experience. Courtney?
Hi, everyone. My name's Courtney Woodward, and I'm sophomore here at Whitman Hansen High School. I am, I first started as an ambassador from Hanson Middle School, and now I moved on to the alumni leadership team where you collaborate with different, you're more like a leader to the eighth graders incoming. So I have been able to help a group of 10 eighth graders through their year of service so far, and I've been with them through Launch Day. So on Launch Day, we were able to serve our communities, but serve together. So throughout the year, we serve as a unit, but we serve individual projects. So Launch Day is pretty special because we're able to serve together and with your fellow ambassadors. So my experience through Project 351 has been pretty amazing. I truly have like changed my outlook on how everything is in the world around me, and I've been able to give back to my community and help people in need. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Courtney. And one of the things I found as a chaperone, I sort of felt like Ally did when I went two years ago. I didn't know what was going to be expected of me. Well, being a chaperone's really easy, so if any of you want to do it, it's terrific because the alums do all the work. And it's really true. We go up on a bus. We met at South Shore Plaza, and they just take over, helping the eighth graders feel comfortable, various activities. They decorated the bus. It was fabulous. And as a chaperone, and you can imagine chaperoning students like these is pretty easy, but it was great. So certainly Courtney in her role, she was on her bus, and really developing leadership skills because you're the ones who are in charge. And TJ, let's hear from you. This is Courtney's brother.
Hello, my name is TJ Woodward. I'm also Courtney's brother. I am the current ambassador for Hanson Middle School, and Project 351 has just been, it's such a great organization, and I'm so glad that I was chosen to be able to be a part of it. And I haven't been with it for a while, and I'm starting spring service very soon, so I'm looking forward to doing clothing drives and stuff like that with the canned food drive later on. I just think it's a great organization to be a part of, and I am very overjoyed that I was able to be chosen to do it.
TJ, where did you go on Launch Day for your service?
I went to Service Village, which was in the State House.
Right.
Where we made school kits for kids coming from Haiti, moving to Massachusetts, and we made hygiene kits for kids that their parents weren't able to afford to buy things like that for them.
Great. Good. Thank you. And Reagan?
Hi, I'm Reagan Hayes. I'm a senior here at Whitman Hansen. Since I was chosen as an ambassador in eighth grade, I, at the time, I didn't really understand what it meant to be a leader. I was quiet. I certainly couldn't talk in front of you now like I am today. So I've kind of seen a lot of personal growth within myself in becoming a leader through community service and sparking my interest in the community and going off and doing other projects, not with Project 351 and going off on my own and then coming back to see the group and doing everything together. I think that it's really influential to everyone that has the opportunity to do it. So I'm very thankful for that.
Great. Thank you, Reagan. So you can see that there's a lot of hope for the future. These are wonderful leaders, and they're going to only become better leaders as a result of working in 351 and the work that they do here at the high school. I wonder if you all have any questions for them?
Well, I have to make a comment. I was impressed with last year's presentation as well as this year's presentation, and personally, I hope you continue the enthusiasm and the involvement in the community because I think your generation is the one that can effectively hopefully make a positive change in the world that we live in. So I hope you continue the good work. Mr. Boyce?
So I'm Mr. Boyce. I'm the director of visitor relations at the JFK Library. I'm sorry for the alums that haven't gone to the library as part of their program. I think it was just this year.
Well, we culminated at the library, but we began at Faneuil Hall.
Oh, wow. Great. Great. Well, we knew there was a lot of activity moving in and out of the building, and really appreciated seeing you. And actually, where I work a Sunday-through-Thursday schedule, I don't always get the Saturday, and I think usually you often have a Saturday, that was what was originally planned. But I do encourage and invite you all to come to the library. Just drop my name, Stevens the first name. They'll all know who you're talking about. I've worked there for 23 years, but let me tell you, when I was you, either in this building or prior, I've always volunteered in one of our schools, going back to when I was in 2nd grade. So you've got a piece of my heart, and you'll see some interesting quotes from President Kennedy, especially his inaugural speech where he asks, "Not what your country can do for you, but what you can do for your country." But even better, if you came back and saw on our glass pavilion the last exhibit, talks about, "This will probably take place in the first 100 days, or the first 1,000 days, or in the lifetime of the, his administration, or in the lifetime of us on this planet, but let us begin." And those are such strong echoing words. I think it resonates everything that you're doing. You're beginning something, and it's right on key. So thanks.
Thank you, Steve.
If you go to the Whitman Hansen Regional School District website, you will see Mr. Boyce's email on there. Do not hesitate to tell him when you're going, so he will be there.
That's right. That's exactly.
I'm volunteering you.
Free admission for them?
Absolutely.
Of course.
Congratulations. We want to thank all of you.
The next thing I'm going to report on is safety and security. Yesterday evening, a information night was held in the lecture hall where we really talked about the measures that are being used at Whitman Hansen to improve safety and security. We listened to parents' comments. A number of us were there. Unfortunately, some of us had to leave for another meeting. Jeff, I wonder if you could come up and just give a brief overview for the school committee for those who might not have been there?
So last night, I would say about 35 parents came to our presentation, giving an overview of what we've done, what we've done really since 2013, post Sandy Hook, as far as school procedures, as far as active shooter, as far as training staff. Officer Frazier and Officer Harrington were invaluable in that, and we really stress the relationship we have with both police and fire departments as a combined effort to make sure that kids are safe. I think the parents were really attentive to that, and I also promised them that we would have more town-style meetings, that we could field questions. We could do those on the building-based level or even as the community-based level. But we outlined processes. One of the, some of the feedback that parents had was they would like to have us use a universal language, what shelter and places, stay put, lockdown, because many parents don't know what that is. So the conversation was positive, back and forth. I think they're searching for more information, and we will continue on with these types of dialogues. My hope is not after an incident, but more proactive as we go into the end of this school year and next school year.
Great.
Questions, anyone?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
The next I'm reporting on are, as you know, with Jeff being appointed as the next superintendent, we have a vacancy for high school principal, and we also have the vacancy that was created when Pat Dillon resigned in September. So those have both been posted. We are now working on what the composition of the search committees will be. If any of you are interested in that role, please let me know. But the high school, typically when we've done that before, we've had a student or two on that. We certainly have high school faculty and our teachers, members from our teachers' association as well. Assistant superintendent, we'll have some of our curriculum directors on it. Clearly, that's going to be important for them. We always have union representation, teachers, and then that person will be recommended to the school committee for approval. That's how that will work. But we have posted, we're starting to get resumes. The positions are both still open. So when I, we meet with you next Wednesday evening, we'll have even more information. But I did want to let you know, this is up and running, and we're, we understand that those positions need to be filled.
Jeff, I had a parent, and I'm, I was just looking in my phone to tell you who it was. I think I sent it to you. I'm pretty sure I did, but I just want to make sure that she's not overlooked. She volunteered kind of right out of the gate. I think she was in a...
For the high school position?
Yes.
Yes, I have that. And what I'm going to do is actually, Dr. Whitman and I are going to meet tomorrow, kind of come up with a plan. My thought process in this whole posting is that we posted it through March 16. We'll have the committee up and running the next week, doing a paper screen, initial interview, final interview, with the goal of having two people in place before spring break. That would be the ideal, if things work out and we don't have electrical storms, or storms like we had over the past weekend. But I really look at parental interaction and student interaction for the high school position, and that'll be out as we move forward.
Thank you.
Yes, and we'll have more to report next week.
Okay. Any questions for the superintendent? Seeing none, all business. 2018, 2019 budget discussion. Last night, we met with Hanson Finance Committee, and about, would you say it was a week before that, we met with Whitman Finance Committee?
Right, right before the last meeting, right.
And went over all of the budget discussions that we had at the very first and second school committee, and both of the finance committees understand where we're at. We told them where we would be at financially. We have to make a decision this evening, what we're going to do so we can move forward because the next meeting that we have, we have to set the assessments to the town because it's bordering on the 45 days before town meeting, and that by law, we have to give the towns that assessment number. So Ruth R., Christine?
I'm happy to jump in. Yep. As we know, when we presented the budget, that it is not exactly a level service budget because we have many things going on that are different. For example, there's no McQuon budget because the, McQuon School will close, Indian Head's budget, Hanson Middle's budget, Duval's budget. High school budget are going up because of the result of that, but clearly that accounts for the shifts and changes that are taking place. It is essentially a level service budget, however, in addition, we have added some other items. One of those is a position we're calling family liaison. This would be a position of an individual with a social work or school adjustment-type background would work with our three elementary schools as a liaison between the school community, within the school community, and with families. We find that for many families, they are unaware of the services that are available in the communities that can support them, Mass Health, BAMZ, a variety of other organizations, but also within the school. This person would also work with our social work interns. We have a social work internship program that we've had for a number of years with North River Collaborative. And as a result of that, those social work interns would also work very closely with the family liaison. The other piece that, the other person who would work with the family liaison is because we are closing a school, we will have a school psychologist who will not be assigned to a particular school. We will focus that person at the elementary level with the idea of running groups and working with a variety of students. So that's a position that we've added. In addition to that, we have added $40,000. It is the beginning of a multi-year, one-to-one electronic device program for our students. We presented that when we were here, so that's, and in addition to as well. We also have added to the budget a special education teacher, one for Whitman Middle School, one for Hanson Middle School, to provide academic support in the sciences for students with individual education plans. So that is another piece. And the other components that's there is funding, the resources that are necessary to run No Adam, the elementary science program. If you recall, that program was a donation to the Whitman Hansen Regional School District from the Gelfand Foundation to the tune of over $450,000. But if we are to continue that program in operation, we need to buy the things that go with the program. So those are the things that were added to the budget, which puts the deficit at just not quite $2.7 million. That's assuming no additional aid from the state and no increase in the assessment. So that's where we are today. In terms of state aid, I'm not confident that we'd see much more in Chapter 70, which is state aid to schools, unless we see it in an increase in per pupil. Right now, the governor's budget provides $20 per student. That doesn't give us a significant amount because we have the costs that are being offset by the charges for charter schools. But we believe that there may be a movement forward, that that money will increase over time. Unfortunately, that's not a number we're going to have for you on March 14. We won't. But it will be there somewhere down the road. So that's something we've looked at. Also trying to get additional funding for regional transportation, supposed to be at 100%, subject to appropriation, so it comes in somewhere in the 60%. So it's not where we'd like it to be. And the same is true of Circuit Breaker, which is funding we receive from the state to offset high cost out-of-district placements. So that's where we are at this point, state funding. Nothing's changed at this point, but I think it will. So we need to stay involved with our legislators. We need to talk to them about Circuit Breaker. We need to talk to them about regional transportation. We need to talk to them about increasing the per pupil amount that they're going to give to school districts because all of that will help us with the deficit that we're trying to control. So that's where we are today. I think one of the biggest concerns we're seeing this year with our budget are the costs of special education. This really goes with the whole family liaison, adjustment counselors, all of the needs for those kind of supports. We are seeing students with severe emotional problems. We try to work with them in the schools, and sometimes we're successful, sometimes we're not. But out-of-district placements are very, very costly, and for the most part, they're the responsibility of the local budget. So that's one area. We're not reimbursed for special ed transportation, so that's another cost we have, and we only receive partial reimbursement for transportation of homeless students. So those are all areas where you can work with your legislators, to talk to them about funding as well. So that's where we are. I'm happy to answer any questions as we move forward. Chris?
Two quick questions. The state aid, what do we have per pupil built into our budget?
Twenty bucks.
Twenty dollars?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, I know we're going to get into this in a minute, but, so you can save it, but can we go through the EMD start and where we ended? I think it was like, was it 1.9, and then we took out 7.5? And we don't have to do that now. I don't...
We're going to get right into that.
We will. It's in your budget.
Chris, we're going to get into that in one second. Can we just go through the two-year?
Yeah, and we'll get it out from the budget book as well, so it's very clear to everybody.
Fred?
Couple things. If you could walk us back a little bit, Ruth, and the difference between having adjustment counselors in the elementary schools on a full-time basis and the family liaison?
Mm-hmm.
The difference in services. Could an adjustment counselor provide the services that a liaison would provide?
Well, I think the reason we looked at that is we're really, I'll tell you where this came from. Um... this came from. We were very fortunate to have that Behavioral Health Initiative grant through North River Collaborative, which provided social workers in our elementary schools, but we knew it was a grant, and when the grant was up, that was gone. We were able this year to eke some money out to pay for the services of Denny Howley, who was the person, she's a social worker, you met her here at school committee, who has sort of overseen what we're trying to do to provide services for students. And one of the things that she sees is that school people are terrific in knowing what school surfaces, services are available, but what our social workers were able to do is they were able to bridge that gap that's between what happens in schools and what are community services. The example she often gives is there's a family that may, a family may qualify for mass health, but due to family circumstances, that family has no idea how they're supposed to be doing that. When we had the social workers in the building, they were able to do that. So having someone who's a liaison working with our social work interns gives them a level of supervision, but also, I think, enhances what they're able to do. I think school adjustment counselors are very valuable as well, and it's not to say that one couldn't do that. When we'll look at the family liaison position, the qualifications would be social worker, school adjustment counselor, it could be anyone who has those kinds of skills.
So, in other words, are we limiting ourselves with our job title? Or can we incorporate?
I think we're absolutely not limiting ourselves, because...
Can we incorporate within the job description?
Any old thing we want.
So that, you know, because social, emotional, we want to try and be able to help as many children as possible?
Absolutely.
And not just limit it to quote-unquote "a family in need."
It won't be limited to a family in need. What I brought this evening, because I thought you might ask me this question.
We had the conversation.
Yes, we did. Through our social work internship program, we get, Kyle and I get a monthly report from Beth Litchfield, who coordinates the program, and it talks about the number of students that they've seen as referrals this, just this year. And one school is 16, and they talk about whether cases are open or closed. Thirty in another one of our schools are receiving those services, 19 at the Conlee School, 18 Maquon Elementary, and 15 at the Indian Head School. So through that program, it's not just a program for a few families. And based on what we're seeing with social, emotional needs and learning, this is not something that is a very small population, this is a wide range of people. Now, someone who might need the intense, intense service of learning how to apply for mass health might be fairly small, but this would not be a program that would be limited to one person.
So this would benefit the student that, per se, their family doesn't need services, but they do need some counseling?
Absolutely.
And it will benefit them?
Sure, yeah.
It also, Fred, sends, there are other families on the brink of some of these problems, and it gives, sends them to the right services as we move forward. They may not be incorporated into these numbers, but you'll see it, if you talk to Kyle, this, there's a pot right there on the edge that it takes care of too. I mean, I figured it's 100-plus.
Let's hear from... I'm Leela Donovan, I'm a Conlee mom, and I'm a social worker too. So I think it's, what you said, Ruth, to hire a social worker opens it up, rather than an adjustment counselor might actually limit it more so. Hiring a social worker also means that you can start building relationships with the social work graduate schools and get more interns?
Right.
Which don't cost money and service the students with the interns.
It's been a wonderful, we've had it for 14 years in the district with North River.
I think hiring a liaison opens, like you said, opens it up to any other discipline, and depending on the licensure and the level of experience, it opens you up to even more opportunities and more resources, more, more people to help our students.
And that's my purpose, is to make sure we're not limiting ourselves?
No, and this really came up as a result of our administrative meetings that we've had over time, because if our students aren't available for learning, we can have the very best science program, we can have one-to-one devices for everyone, but if they're not really there and their minds aren't open to teaching and learning, that's going to be a problem. So I think all of us felt that this was a priority. So thank you.
Anyone else? Fred?
Also, continuing on with the budget discussion, regional transportation. Are we at a point that we would consider suing the Commonwealth? The state auditor has issued a report saying that regional transportation should be funded at 100%. Where do we, you know, there's a lot of money at stake. $400,000, Ruth?
That's a lot. If we were funded, what was the latest percentage, Christine, of what we're getting?
63%.
63, so...
Yeah, that's about, that's based on about $950,000.
Yeah, it's about a million dollars if we were to get everything, and we get 600.
So we're talking 350, 400,000?
About 400,000, make a huge, the last time we were fully funded for regional transportation was 2007. It's the last time. We got 900 and some thousand dollars.
They say send them the bill, and they don't pay it, we don't do it.
Wow.
Sure.
Take that auditor's report, and we as a committee work to send it to every legislator.
That's what you've got to do, and...
You've got to keep going at...
There is, currently, there was just a bill, was it Monday, that I believe it moved out of House Ways and Means, and that's to take a look at how school regions?
Yes.
Are being funded.
Yep, yep.
I know Mike, I think, has something for when we do the legislative report. But there is a groundswell on how regions are being treated. You know, write letters, I'm sure many people see me, you know, writing letters and asking others to join in and write letters, and, you know, it's the one thing we can try and do, because doing nothing, to me, is not an option. But, you know, we have to look at any available funds that we can garner.
You're exactly right.
Things are bad.
To answer your question, Fred, it was a few years back, and I want to say it was about eight years back, was the school, regional school district to the west of us that did what you're talking about, and how the state kind of intervened in that, was they said, okay, until this case is solved, we're going to hold up every penny of regional reimbursement until we figure it out, and that kind of ended it right then and there. It was kind of like saying, you shot across our bow, we're shooting across your bow, we'll see how it works. And I, if I could recall, I would say it, but I can't, it was one, it was a region that was west of us. I remember that, and I think it was about eight years ago, Ruth, do you recall that?
Yeah.
Because I'm kind of in agreement with you. They make a deal, and then they don't come through with...
When's enough enough?
Yep.
Exactly.
That's all.
And because of that, we can't charge for busing. And if you're here, you know, at the high school, once students start getting their licenses, we still have to have the buses, and people will see the buses are not full when they're, especially when they're leaving at the end of the day. It's very frustrating to be paying those bills but not getting the commensurate reimbursement, or being able to say, maybe we won't bus, but we don't have that option as a region. So it's legislation that really needs to be addressed.
Chris? Before we leave that point that Mr. Small made, I mean, is it worth having, like, someone like Mars come in and having a conversation?
Well, Mars is working on this.
But there's some strength in numbers. I mean, look, I get that's an aggressive approach that Mr. Small's proposing, but we're, we're again staring down a budget that none of us like, right? So at some point, we have to do something. It may be worth a conversation, so we haven't had it since 2007. What's the, what's the total over the last 10 years that hasn't been funded?
Yeah, it's, well, take about $400,000 and...
Millions.
Yeah, it's a lot, it's a lot of money.
Four million.
Yeah.
And there's no flexibility, that's the problem, so, yeah.
Didn't we, as regional schools, kind of gang together over a couple other issues yesterday, when we put money, I forget how much?
Yeah, we did, 500.
We kept that in there, correct?
Yes.
Was that something that we could say, hey, maybe that's something to look at?
I think it might be a good idea if we could get both of our state reps and Senator Brady from Brockton, and have a conversation with them, maybe like the next meeting, and ask them to maybe write up a bill that they might be able to bring forward. I mean, they did it pretty successfully the last time, when we talked about it and they had a bunch of people do it, and we got our rate up on the per pupil. Maybe we could get them to start that ball rolling for regional school districts, and maybe to gain some weight. I mean, doing nothing, as Fred said, is not really a good option. So we might, maybe we should send them letters. Is everybody in concert with that?
I know there are a multitude of different bills floating around right now in the House and Senate.
Hundreds.
Some are addressing $100 per pupil.
The one out there right now, that 82 cosponsors with Josh Cutler is that they're proposing $100 per pupil.
$100 per pupil.
That's the most, like, last year, they had like 18, so I mean, 82 state reps going for it, seems to...
And if I'm not mistaken, is that the one that changed it permanently to a minimum of?
No, this is just this year. Last year was a minimum of 55.
Right.
It did not get passed.
Right, there's something still running around for that. I know in the Senate, there's something out there that seems to have, or at least I was told by someone, has a little head of steam at $70 per pupil.
That's still out there.
You know, so who knows what happens when the House and the Senate and the governor, and they all mesh and get together? But there is a groundswell, and also looking at how regions are funded. Because we have expenses unique to us that a regular town-school system does not have.
Consentually, you want me to write something up and send it to the two state reps and the state senator? What do we have to do?
I would think it's, at least it's a step.
On behalf of the committee?
If we can quantify, you know, '07, this is what we didn't get. '08, this is what we didn't get. I mean, it's a big, $4 million back, right the back of the math, we're coming up, back of the envelope math, that's a lot of money.
Four million dollars plus two and a half, plus two and a half, plus two and a half.
It's, so...
It's a lot of money we didn't get.
It's a ton of money, I mean, I can quickly do it for you, it's a lot.
So I, but I think that speaks to the size of the issue, maybe, hopefully gets a little bit more attention.
Consentually, somebody want to make a motion?
Yes, I'd be glad to make that motion. Send a letter with a self-addressed DM'd envelope of where they can send the check, just as a attention grabber. Second.
Somebody want to second?
Foisted.
Foisted.
I'm sorry, I didn't...
No voice on board.
I thought you might still be thinking about those free tickets for Project 351.
They're all welcome. You folks as well.
Oh, Mr. Boyce just threw it out there.
Putting it out there.
Motion being made in second discussion?
I do.
Bob?
I'd like to add that I think all of us should sign that.
Oh, yes, no question.
Absolutely. We've done that before, and I think it's a good idea. There's, there is legislation out there, but if we don't say anything, it's, it means we think it's okay, and we don't.
Fred?
If I could add, copy to our reps in the governor's office.
Sure.
Send it to everyone.
And copy the state auditor.
State auditor?
Reports.
That's a great idea.
They don't lie, and...
Right, we had the state auditor here once.
She's from Whitman.
And that's awesome.
Bump, Suzanne Bump, I believe. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all was in favor? Unanimous, thank you very much, because every little bit helps. And anyone that wants to join in that happens to be watching or is in the gallery and add some of their own flavor to that?
Contact.
We're all on it, so...
Or write your senators, write your state reps, write the governor, email them, everything, let's, anything and everything that they can get that says, hey, you know, live up to your end of the bargain, please.
And the other one is with Circuit Breaker as well. It's supposed to be funded at 75%, and it's not funded. It's, Kyle, what's the latest?
65. I was on a webinar regarding extraordinary relief the other day, and they said they look to be able to get up to 68.1 is where they're at right now, depending on what relief they need to give out. It could go up or down.
But 75 would be a lot better, wouldn't it?
A heck of a lot better.
So I think we should put both of them in the letter.
Sure.
And, you know, because they really, there, the one place where I think more revenue could come to Whitman-Hanson, I don't see it in Chapter 70, except with an increase in the per pupil amount.
Okay, getting back on the budget discussion, we're $2,674,821 out right now. Every year, we always, in the last few years, have been hitting excess and deficiency. Right now, there's $936,000 in E and D.
What's that number again, Bob, sorry?
I'm sorry?
What was that number?
$936,000 in excess and deficiency. And just so the people will know that might be watching, the excess and deficiency is an account that the school committee is allowed to keep, because we only can set our budget once a year. We're allowed to have 5% of our budget, which, if we had 5% of our budget, would be around $2,500,000 roughly, and we're at $936,000. In previous years, we've taken as much as $900,000, $750,000. If, I'll give you some, some numbers. If you took $500,000 from E and D, it would take a 10.75 assessment to the towns of Whitman and Hanson to get us to even. That would be a $1,302,781 increase to Whitman, and an $875,054 increase to Hanson. To do it in simpler math and in layman's terms, every one percentage of assessment is worth about $200,000 from both towns. It breaks down approximately 60/40, to do the math correctly. So if you figure it that way, you'll see where we come up with the exact figures. If you look on page, I believe it's 26, section four.
It's outlined right there.
You'll, you'll see the assessment part of it. If, that's at $500,000. If you did $400,000, it would take 11.25 of an assessment increase, which would be $1,363,375 to the town of Whitman, and $915,754 to the town of Hanson. This would be an increase over their assessment now. Everybody understand that? Are there any questions?
I do have a question.
Ally?
Correct me if I'm wrong, last year, we took $750,000 from E and D.
Yes.
And we only put back, what was it, 400?
Just, just a little bit over 400.
422-something, I think it was, if my memory serves me correct.
So we don't want to take 750 of us here, if we can help it.
No, this was at 400 and 500, both of those two numbers.
Right.
I wouldn't recommend anything over 500, because if you take out 500, you have $436,000 left in E and D for anything that comes up in this district. There is no other place, once we set this assessment, and I know the committee knows this, but just so anybody's watching, there is no way, once this budget is set, we can go back to the towns and say, hey, it's, this happened, that happened. So, Mike?
Christine, how much was in E and D last year at this point?
At the, it's, June 30th, 2016, it was certified at 1.2 million, and then you took out the 750,000 to balance this year's budget, which brought it down to 450,000, and then we put back just over 400,000.
You don't, like, at this point last year, there's no way to show?
At this point last year? Well, it was 450,000, at this point last...
How much was in E and D right now, last year?
1.2.
When we were about to go, 1.2.
1.2 million. We voted sometime in March, I don't know the date, to use 750,000.
I'm at, Fred.
Sorry, I misunderstood.
Did I answer your question?
Yep.
Yes, Fred?
Over the past three years, can you tell us how much we have put back into E and D each year? So last year, it was 422,000.
Yep, the year before was probably about 600.
That sounds right.
And the year before was probably close to 800.
Okay.
Yep.
So with munis, we are getting far more accurate.
Yes, we're, the budgets are more accurate.
Much tighter, much tighter.
Much, much tighter in the ebb and flow from the state, such as Circuit Breaker. Uh, now, our next year's budget was compiled and we used this year's Circuit Breaker for next year's money? Is that how it works?
Yeah, we're a year behind.
Okay.
Um, so, anything that comes in this year, we anticipate using to balance next year's budget versus the, the year before, the same thing, so.
So this year, we were using the anticipated revenues of seventy-five percent, as opposed to the sixty-five that it's now being funded at. So that's going to be even tighter to put money back next year.
That's correct, because that's going to be even tighter, because we might have to use current Circuit Breaker money to offset this year as well as next year.
I'll wait till we get into discussion about E and D, but I know myself, I'm very, I want to be very cautious.
Because that's one of the areas I'm concerned about this year, is special education costs.
Yeah, because with the, the trend we're taking, we're dishing out money, we're not getting it back. E and D isn't to balance your budget, it's supposed to be for emergencies. We get a couple of cases where students come in, you know, that we're going to be heading probably, what, five hundred thousand, it drops it down to two hundred. You have a bad storm, rips off a roof, you have to pay for that, we're out of money.
That you get back.
You get it back, but you have to have it in the bank. I mean, we're chipping away at what we're supposed to have for reserves to pay for the We've tightened down, this is dire, we can't keep putting the E and D to pay for a budget.
What, what it comes down to, Dan, is if we continue on this road within a year to maybe two years, depending on what happens, is there will be no E and D.
That's what I mean.
This, the E and D money is, I know that we keep saying we shouldn't be, we shouldn't be using it, obviously, but it is there because it's money that was budgeted through taxation and just because things didn't go up enough, so part of it, you know, it's a double-edged sword, I a hundred percent agree with you, but we're in this situation at ten, eleven percent.
Yeah, and every year, every year, we're going to hit that brick and we're not going to get out of it, and then we're going to be two, three, four, five million in the hole, because there's nothing to pick for it.
Totally agree. Fred?
Kyle, how easy would it be for just two or three special needs students, if they move into the district, to go through an additional three, four hundred thousand dollars?
Be easy, um, let me add a little something, Ruth and I were speaking the other day, there's a listserv for my group as well, and so someone put out on that this week, four questions, and the questions were, where are you at with your budget for out-of-district tuitions? Are you in this year's Circuit Breaker or are you carrying over a year? And a couple a little less relevant to this conversation. The person putting out was third year in a row, up four hundred thousand dollars in tuitions over what they budgeted. It's, out of the twelve people or so that have put in so far, ten are over budget in tuitions, and two are holding steady, but over half are using this year's money for Circuit Breaker. So we're in good shape going into that, using last year's, but you can see where the trend's going, and a lot of it's the social emotional stuff we're talking about.
And that's one of the reasons to have the E and D, is to pay for those unforeseen placements, correct?
However, however, the state also has money for that as well, maybe you could speak to that?
On, on what end? On Circuit Breaker?
In terms of lightening the burden of special ed costs. For example, we, if, if we had been at a certain level, there would have been an opportunity for us to apply to the state, I believe the deadline was a couple of days ago, for relief. So it's not, it's true, E and D can be used for that, but there are other funding sources. So I just want to make sure you know that when you make your decisions, that it's not just E and D that can help with special ed costs, there's also some money. I know one of the neighboring school districts had, really got hit hard with some out-of-district costs a year ago, and they went to that fund. They, they don't have reserves, they're a town anyway, so they didn't have that as an option.
I can add on to that a little bit, Christine, I have been having this conversation the last couple of weeks, we put in for extraordinary relief, just because there was a deadline, we didn't think we were going to get it, but we wanted to make sure we met the deadline just in case there was an opportunity. You do need to have a hundred and twenty-five percent over from last year to qualify for that. I sat through the webinar the other day to listen to what those stipulations are, so if you did get hit with those three, four really big residential placements, you may qualify for that as well.
What is that figure? What is a hundred and twenty-five percent of your budget?
Of what you had last year in tuitions? Um, what do, do I know that off the top of my head? No.
Not even close.
No.
We're not close, no, but I don't.
No, but I'm just asking what that number is.
I don't have the addition number in front of me.
Because that would be a good E and D buffer number, right? Right.
Yep. Mr. Boyce, in the meantime, go ahead, you get that number.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make a motion, we take four hundred and fifty thousand from E and D to apply to the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen budget, to open the discussion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Discussion, Fred?
Myself, yeah, and I want to hear what that number is, so we know what the buffer's on, but.
It's a hundred and twenty-five percent, but that's after the threshold of, what is it, forty thousand, forty?
Right, so, yeah, let me go a little deeper, so the threshold for this year was forty-three thousand, ninety-four dollars, and the threshold is, we pay that upfront, so until we get to that base, we don't get a dollar of that reimbursement.
For Circuit Breaker.
For Circuit Breaker, on top of that, and for extraordinary relief, so that's part of Circuit Breaker. And we don't get transportation reimbursement at all, it's zero. So we have to get to that number, it's forty-three oh nine four, they're going to lift it to forty-four thousand, a hundred and change next year, and it goes up about a thousand bucks every year that we have to get to. So you take the forty-some-odd students, you take that forty-three thousand dollars off first, and then you get your reimbursement, and then it has to be a hundred and twenty-five thousand over that. So I have a good.
So you've got a pretty big liability.
The liability to get, it's difficult to get there, but it is extraordinary relief, it's called that for a reason, I think, is, it really has to be out of the ordinary.
Yeah, I know myself, and I'll be glad to make a motion to amend in a few minutes, I can't see taking more than what we put back last year, and we've been trending down, 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 and I'd want to be careful. I know myself, my comfort zone would be four hundred thousand.
The figure you're looking for, Fred, is two million, five hundred and forty thousand, nine hundred and ninety dollars.
That was what we, our actual budget this year for special ed tuitions to other schools, it's two point five million.
But we need to take into consideration the hundred and twenty-five percent, you have to take.
It's more complicated than that, but it gives you, it gives you a sense of the number.
You have to go to each student, drag it off, come to the formula.
Oh yeah, it's complicated.
Bring it out, and then it's, it's going to change.
And if you get new students in, you're talking, you know, forty-three thousand of wax, so five students is over two hundred grand.
Yep.
You know, right there.
Yeah, it's another area where you can be legislatively active. Our federal government is supposed to be reimb, reimbursing states for special ed at forty percent. They reimburse it less than sixteen. That's a huge problem, it's a big difference.
Anyone else, I have a?
Just one more, one more question. So we got the starting balance for where we were a year ago, right? We started about one point two, where were we one year prior?
One point nine.
So we went from one point nine to one point two to nine thirty-six.
Yep.
That's correct.
Correct. Now, the other thing, historically, Chris, before that, we were not taking as much as nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of it, that was extraordinarily high. And even the seven fifty was high, it had been more likely a half a million each time we did it, and then as the budget became tighter, a lot of it happened with rising cost of health insurance, because we had a year where we could do maybe five hundred thousand and still be okay, but as health insurance has gone up, that's just made it very difficult to balance the budget.
And one more question.
Sure.
So whatever we set tonight is set, or we can go, we can, we can raise that number, we just can't decrease that number, or do I have it wrong? Is that just the assessment? Am I mixing and matching?
You can lower the number.
Okay, you can't go higher?
Well, I would think for this, you could do whatever you want with this number.
There's no restriction on E and D.
Up until, up until.
Assessment, you can't go.
That's what I wanted to say.
Yeah, it's the assessment, but this, if you decide you want to do more next week, you could.
Or less.
Yeah. You can change it right up until we get to the final number.
But once we vote the assessment, that's it. Then it's over.
But I mean, a basic thing is, it, it's confusing, because keep in mind, if we keep changing the figure to the finance committees, it's a problem for them also.
Or to the administration, it's hard.
Either way. Fred?
The number I'm looking is the trend of how much we've been putting back. And, you know, instead of what we're taking out, but looking at what we're putting back, and that's been trending downward, on a downward spiral, and the big difference is munis. Uh, that was, that came into play, what, three years ago?
Longer than that.
Five?
Five, six.
And it tightened down.
Now, and everything gets tighter and tighter.
It's very easy to track your money, that's why.
So our money was up here, it's down here, and our income's not filling us back in, so we have to be very careful, I mean.
Right.
It's like, Fred, you, you, that's what my issue last year too, is like, we're, we're digging into this to pay for a budget, and, you know, what do we got, two years left before we're dry?
Exactly.
I'd like to make a motion to amend, Mr. Boyce's motion, to the figure of four hundred
Can he amend my?
You have a draw.
I'm not withdrawing it.
You've got to vote and say.
I'm not withdrawing it.
Any, any other?
Discuss the merits of the four hundred and fifty thousand. If you really think we need to be weaning about fifty thousand dollars, I think we need to get up and, and we need to go do a few classes, because we're not educated. We're ushering in a new superintendent, we're ushering in a new assistant superintendent, we're ushering in a new high school principal, a new high school principal that we haven't seen in seven years. I'm, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not willing to bullshit around with this, and pardon my French. We've, we've got a lot going on. This is just, it gets way, way too difficult, but, believe me, I'm, I'm ready next week to support a, um, assessment to the towns that is equal to the balance of this, regardless. And anything else additional we get in, we, then that's E and D, and that's what's going to help us. But, you know, we're continually at the same point, we just haven't moved it yet, and let's move. We just hold those kids. Maybe not in the lifetime of us on this planet, but let us begin. And we keep stumbling here. We got the idea for the letter, we got the idea for being proactive, we've got everything in place, except now we want to talk about fifty thousand, four fifty.
Just before, before, one second, Fred, before I get back to you, Mr. Boyce's motion would put an eleven percent assessment to the towns. It's, it's right in the middle, one's ten point seven five and the other one's eleven point two five. It would make it eleven percent flat to the towns. I'm sorry, go ahead, Fred.
Uh-uh, and I'm fine to discuss the merits, I just feel that we're playing with one-time money, and it's supposed to be emergency money, and I'm just very, very concerned based upon what we've been putting back, that we keep seeing that dwindle and dwindle where it's the one-time money.
Yeah.
That's my concern.
Anyone that have a question? No? Good? Well, I have a motion on the floor to put up four hundred and fifty thousand. Mr. Small tried to amend it to four hundred thousand, I didn't hear any seconds to any amendments, so I'm going to have to move to the vote. All those in favor of the amendment, I mean, the motion made by Mr. Boyce to take four hundred and fifty thousand dollars from E and D to decrease the budget, keep in mind, you can change this before we get to the assessment date. Any further question? Mr. Boyce?
No, I, I was voting.
He's enthusiastic, right?
I'm not sure if Boyce might have bad tickets.
All those in favor? Opposed? Abstaining.
Ally, did you vote? I did. Okay, thank you.
What did you have, Michelle? I didn't look at everybody quickly.
Two, three, four, five, six, versus two.
Okay, so we're going to take four fifty from E and D. Now, other, other things that could come forward out of, there's other issues that, that may happen, as you know, we budgeted on twenty dollars per pupil. Is that right, Michelle?
Yeah.
There is a motion, there is a couple of different bills, one is a bill for a hundred dollars, one is a bill for seventy dollars. If we added fifty dollars per pupil at the seventy, Christine, what would that give us, about?
Two hundred thousand.
Yeah, a couple hundred.
And you budgeted at twenty, so it would be the difference in the thirty dollars.
That's what I'm saying.
Right, and if they did a hundred, it would be just under four hundred thousand.
A hundred and twenty thousand difference.
Okay, so that'd, that'd help lower that number.
And if they do a hundred, that's going to solve this.
You may not know that number.
Yeah, we will not, probably not.
Probably not.
Next July.
You know, yeah.
What about, is there any other savings other than cutting?
We've, we've really looked hard at this.
Oh, I, I know you have, but it's incumbent upon us to ask.
We have to ask.
No, it's extremely tight.
Yeah.
Mr. Boyce?
What about past year encumbrances that don't need to be used?
We won't know that for a while.
I won't know that until June.
Okay.
Or the middle of July.
Yeah.
But that would go back, that would go to E and D.
That's, that's another piece, that's another piece that's gotten much tighter over the years as well.
Sure.
Right.
Christine, is there any, in the, in the insurance, we come, I, I think as early as today, I thought you might have a meeting.
We did, we had a meeting this morning and we actually voted, I can tell you what the rates are, but that's still not going to adjust anything in, in the health insurance line, because, um, we have about a dozen or twenty or so student, I mean, teachers that are turning twenty-six, so I need to account for them moving off their, if they're currently not on ours, they're on their parents, they're going to either need to come, they're going to come, I have the option to come on ours, so.
So if you have a dozen of them, and it adds up to twenty-five thousand dollars a year.
Right.
There's three hundred grand more.
Right.
Okay, all right. Just drawing at straws.
Right.
Looking, looking.
Yeah, we, we, I've, I've been, I've been keeping a close eye on this since last September when they started, started having the steering committee meetings again, so.
Because in case anyone that may be watching doesn't know, when teachers hit twenty-six years old, they have to leave.
Or anyone, any employee.
Yeah, any employee has to leave their parents' insurance and go on to their employees' insurance or whatever they determine they're going to do, so that is part of where we're coming up with this figure of twelve teachers, correct?
That's correct.
Ally?
We don't by any chance have any idea how many teachers are not currently taking advantage of the health insurance.
Well, just, we had, have about three hundred and ninety-five enrollees right now out of six hundred. And that's total employees, that's everyone, that's not just teachers, it's everyone that's eligible for it.
How many in that, uh, reaching twenty-six age bracket?
Next year's, between twelve and sixteen, employees, not just necessarily teachers.
Yeah.
And some could be married, some could be single, like, you know, I don't. And that also changes too, you have to take into account, we have people that might be on a single plan and then they get married and their spouse comes on their plan here.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, a few meetings ago, didn't you say there was, we were looking at a health insurance increase of at least two hundred and forty-five thousand?
No.
No, I have that written down for some reason.
Um, no, I believe that I have in there just over a hundred thousand.
What was the budget that you went in?
Yeah, 100, just about 155,000 increase.
You budgeted going on Mayflower, being added a certain, which was the rate?
I budgeted at just under 10%, but then we have to take into account those three factors that I just said, so.
Chris?
So staying on the topic of the budget, one of the things the budget does not include is the full-day, no-cost kindergarten, correct?
Correct.
And we've had a lot of discussions over the past several months about all the benefits of that, including the one that came up at FinCom the other night with the number of students that have never set foot in a district school because they're going to charter schools that do have.
That could be one of the reasons they go there.
Right, just an other reason. So is there, is there a mechanism that we can use to, I'll leave it to those that are more seasoned at the town meeting opportunities, is there, is there anything that we can do to get a warrant article out to simply look at just the full-day, no-cost kindergarten in addition to the budget? I know this is a tight budget, so I can't see any way how, already 11%, throwing another $600,000 in, I just, I don't see how.
That's been the challenge all the way along, why we've not been able to do that.
Correct. But I also don't feel comfortable with us just making the decision to exclude it. So is there a way to get that independently out to the town?
You have to put that out as a warrant article on the side, but then it has to, that would most likely have to go to an override. Because it wouldn't fit, wouldn't fit in this budget, which is a line item.
And of course, it's not a one-shot purchase like a capital warrant article. It's going to be something in the budget that you're going to have to maintain because it's primarily salaries.
Okay. Do we have that number?
Do you have a full day K, I think 600,000?
It's in the budget, yeah, it's about 500, oh, between 500 and 600,000. One of the benefits that would help is there is money in the revolving fund from tuition, so you could use that that year to help outfit classrooms and do things like that. One of the concerns that I would have now is that to try and do it for the upcoming fall would probably be challenging. However, I think if you wanted to do it for the fall of 2019, you could get organized and have it as a warrant article and get people to vote for it. I think trying to get it in the operating budget is always going to be very difficult because of our revenue problems.
So that's going to jack you up.
This is how Rockland got it passed, is they did it as a separate article, and they voted it, and they got it, but they had to do a prop two and a half because it's got to be part of your operating budget. You've got to have that every year. It's not like fixing a roof.
It's not a cap, so that's what kills you.
Fred?
There would be one other way to skin that cat if by some measure of good fortune we did see a windfall in regional transportation reimbursement. If we saw a windfall as $100 per pupil increase as opposed to the $20 per pupil, that would boost the monies we would have available for our operating budget. As long as we did it with complete transparency, saying that should we be able to encounter additional funds, this is how we would spend the money, and the towns would be in agreement. You know, that would be another way that we could do it, correct, Ruth?
Yeah, we could.
You could do it that way, but then the next year you have to put it in the budget to fund it. It's not going to be 600,000, but most of that cost is borne in employment.
Yes, it is, so you've got to pay it year after year.
You're going to be paying it year after year, so again.
But if your base is going up from the state.
Yeah.
You're going under the assumption that your base from the state isn't going to be declining as well.
Exactly.
And if you did that too, it's also getting us target share closer.
Right, but there's also the fact that we talk about the shrinkage in E and D. If we got some of that money back, it would also help replenish E and D and maybe stave off that year or two that we're talking about before we're not hitting E and D at all. So it's, it's all dollars, no matter how you look at it, it's dollars. So, anyone have any other budget questions? It's pretty much, that's where we are until we meet our next meeting. I don't see any of those numbers taking any big changes in the next couple of weeks.
So we're at 11% right now.
Pardon me?
11% right now.
It's, it would be a flat 11% where we are right now, because we were at 400 or 500, and we're at 450 off of V and D, so it puts it right at 11%.
So are we not considering putting full-day kindergarten on an override? Is that what I'm hearing? Because it's too late to do that?
It's not, never too late.
It's not too late, but implementation would be challenging, especially with the other things that we're doing in the district.
With the McQuon's closing and all that.
I mean, you could do it.
No, I understand that, but last year it was strongly endorsed by everyone within the district. And now we're saying that that's.
It isn't, I don't think it's any lack of endorsement, I think it's reality.
They're implementing it in fall of this year versus the fall of the following year.
Okay.
In order to, would it involve to get that line item in, would make, someone would make a motion now to say we want this on?
We'd add it to the articles, which you're going to hear in a few minutes.
Which you could vote next week.
What we'll be doing.
Wanted to get the language for it.
Yeah, I'd have to get the language.
You know, we got, we got an article we could add in the town.
Christine, again, I'm speaking for the committee consensually, would you like to see the language for next week and be prepared in case somebody made that motion?
Sure.
Yeah, we could do that.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Why don't we do that, and then it gives you a chance to look at it.
Consensually? Mr. Boyce?
What's that? Oh yeah, I'm fine.
Fred?
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure.
Oh yeah, sure. We got to do something every year.
If we're prepared, you know.
Yeah.
Any other budget discussion items before we move forward? Okay, thank you. McQuon closing update. Okay, last week, I misspoke because I was confused about a road out in the front of this building. I have since walked it with Mr. Sandlin, and the road is going to be, if you look at the center island in front of this building, approximately down at the first turn, there's going to be a six-foot swale, as he called it, left in the grass. And then there would be a 24-foot wide road, 450 feet long, stopping at the stop sign right over in front of the gym. So the drainage from this road would go into a swale, which would also, on the current road we have, would not be torn up at all. There are drains in that road. He would be adding one drain to drain into those, and they go out, I believe, that way towards the end of the high school. I walked it with him last week because I was confused, and again, I apologize for any confusion I might have given to anyone, because I thought he was just going to cut right into it and make the current road wider. That is not so. He's going to put an inner road, 450 feet long by 24 feet wide, to help the drop-off for the McQuon closing students that are coming here. 24 feet wide is going to allow them to have some parking for the student drop-off. And that's going to be in front of the building, so they would be entering this building from the front. Any questions? Because again, I was wrong, I was a little bit confused on it, and I'm sorry that I said what I said.
Is that the plan?
That is the plan.
Okay.
Now, he has spoken with the DPW in Whitman. They're going to dig it out. They talked about when they start digging it, whether they would make it 16 inches deep, and that would require X amount of fill, or 24 inches deep. They're going to have to do some test holes, and they are capable of doing that. And we all agreed, it's pretty wet out there, it's probably going to be 24 inches deep, and have to put in bank gravel, and then put in process, and then pave it. He assured me this evening, he couldn't be here this evening, but I spoke with him and Christine, that it would be in that $109,000 budget, it would probably come in at less. There's going to be a Cape Cod berm on both sides, and as I understand, the Cape Cod berm, that's a banked-up, blacktop berm, 450 feet long on each side, with certain breaks at certain points, so the water can drain off the road into the swale. The swale is going to flow into the drainage that is currently there.
That won't interfere with conservation?
No.
Just one?
The only thing he did say was we have to determine how many gallons of extra water, because you have to, yeah, you have to notify.
No, that's why I was worried, because when we talked about the back, that was adding a great, a great amount of water.
Christine, what did you say about the engineering part of it? The blacktop people were doing the engineering?
Yeah, they just need to determine the gallons of the runoff, that's what we need to determine.
And I believe he had spoken with two local companies?
Yes.
I can remember one, I can't remember the other one. One was TNK. And he's going to speak.
People who did the tennis. Oh, Century 21 paving.
That's it, Century 21 paving, and CMC.
Right.
To get three different quotes. He's already got two.
Right.
And I had spoken to CMC, who's another local company. So that's the story on that part of the drop-off. That is the plan for it. And that's where I was confused. I had heard two or three different ones, like a lot of people probably had. I physically came here, walked it with Ernie, and went through it, so I wouldn't be confused, and then I respoke with him today. And he spoke about quite a bit of fill that you have to put in, and that was one of the bigger costs, obviously, the fill on the blacktop is.
Are we still at 110,000?
We are.
Yes. It was actually, hopefully, going to be less than 110, the way they figure it out. If this, again, you start digging out there, you might find something that.
No, it is wet.
Yeah.
Can I ask you a question on that, Mr. Chairman? Actually, probably Mr. Small might agree with this. The DPWs for both towns, or at least I know for Whitman, have GIS mapping, which they're able to tell, you know, they know if you're dumping water into the street because they can tell by the volume of whatever. So if you need runoff numbers for volumes of water, can't that come through one of the two towns?
I believe, I believe, Steve, that's what they're trying to come to a conclusion.
Just know that that resource is there.
Yes.
Bruce is working.
Mr. Martin has been working very, very closely.
Yeah, I know which town.
And they've got the equipment and everything, so it's good.
So that's, that's currently the plan.
Thank you.
As of this, like you said, I spoke with Ernie this afternoon because I knew he couldn't be here. Christine and him and I were on a phone, three-way phone conversation.
Because we presented it, but it's been presented, but it's not the plan, per se. It's what we're looking into, we've been told. So now, just making sure that that is, quote-unquote, the plan.
Yes, yes. Any questions?
Thanks, Bob.
Anyone else? That's McQuon closing in a nutshell, so to speak. The rest is all hinging on the vote, the 12th, is it Fred? In Whitman?
Yes.
Yep. And I also believe the playground committee over at Indian Head.
We're going to get to that.
Well, okay, that's a, that's part of the McQuon closing.
Okay. All right, moving on. New business faculty handbook revision. In your packet we received, there is an update to the Massachusetts Pregnant Workers Fairness Act, and it's going to be effective April 1st, 2018, so we have to enter that into our faculty handbook. And that's a taken motion?
So moved.
To accept? Discussion?
Waving goodbye, Mr. Chairman.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Unanimous, thank you. Warren articles. I'm going to have to do them one at a time.
Before you, you only have the warrant articles for the town of Whitman. I will bring forth the town Hanson's next meeting.
Okay. These are for the town of Whitman only. Article S1, see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate $35,000 to pay for the costs associated with improvement security at the DeValle Elementary School, included but not limited to installation of card access to interior front entry doors, relocation of interior doors and walls, and installation of a counter, and reconfiguration of the office area with a security window, and reconfiguring of the clinical area to ensure safety for students and staff.
Motion. Second.
Discussion.
Can I just, so everyone knows, so anything with an S is a special town meeting, which is in advance of the annual town meeting or within it. We adjourn from the annual and then into the special, and that's monies from this current year as opposed to the annual, which will be?
This is actually the annual, Steve. He calls it S.
Oh, he did, it's not for, I'm so sorry.
It's not the entire.
I am so sorry.
That's all right. I would see how you would think that, though.
Yeah, I would, yeah.
When, in that spirit, though, when we do submit for Hanson, there might be some things that we should probably touch base with Hanson, see if they want to spend the money in this fiscal year as opposed to next to get a project done quicker. If it's passed in May, you don't have to wait till July for the money, that they could get moving on something quicker, such as a playground or something of that nature.
Well, part of the problem is they have to have a special town meeting.
And they're not, they're done.
Yeah, but they could have a special within their annual.
Yeah, the special is always within the annual every year.
Yeah.
I believe that is their plan.
Just throwing that out there.
Everyone understand S1? I have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Article S2, see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate $35,000 to pay for the costs associated with improvement security at the Conley Elementary School, including but not limited to installation of card access to interior front entry doors, relocation of interior doors and walls, and installation of a counter, and reconfiguration of the office area with a security window, and reconfiguring of the clinical area to ensure safety for students and staff.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? As you can see, it's identical to S1, only has the school name changed.
Yeah, yeah.
Can we just let people know what these are? I mean, the security, you know.
When you enter either one of these schools, this is going to give you very similar to what we have at the high school here. So you're coming into a security area with an office with a sliding window, so people can't just walk right into the building as they can currently.
We discussed it last night's little meeting, so.
It also will move the nurses' door, so what it does is it moves that second set of doors out beyond the office door, so you can't enter. It also will take away the nurse, so you can't access the nurse's office.
From the hallway.
From the hallway without being inside the actual physical school.
It's all security.
Any other discussion? All those in favor? Remember, this is to place on there. S3, see if the town will vote to appropriate $55,000 to pay for costs associated. We're replacing the fire detection panel and devices in the Conley Elementary School. The fire panel, the fire.
So, second.
Fire panel has been getting old and putting it off, putting it off, putting it off, and now the chief wants it done.
Actually, what's happened is the panel is obsolete. They cannot get parts for the panel at all. If a detector goes, they are able to jury-rig a different detector, but the panel itself, if any part failed in that, you'd have to replace the whole panel, you'd be looking at a substantially increased cost, because you'd have to do it on a rather rapid basis, where this way here, they can do it on an off-peak basis. We're also going to be saving the detectors and the panel itself, so that we'll have spare parts for the middle school, which has the same system, so we don't have to spend this money right now on replacing the middle school panel, and we have a backup, so to speak.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Again, this is to place. S4, see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate $35,000 to fund costs to update existing cameras and add additional cameras to the interior and exterior of the DeValle Elementary School. Again, this is a security measure. Made in second?
Yep.
Discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. S5, see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate $25,000 to fund the cost of replacement of exterior doors with card access at the Conley Elementary School, DeValle Elementary School, and Whitman Middle School.
So moved.
Second.
This is to replace some doors and put in some card access. Again, it's another security measure. Any discussion?
I believe these doors are also experiencing some mechanical failures of the framing.
The school was built in '72, and the doors are starting to rot and rust, and the frames are starting to come detached from the bricks. So it's, again, it's another security thing, but the doors are getting old.
How many doors, Christine, is that involved?
I think, Mike.
Pretty vague statement, that's all.
Pardon me?
Is it like three doors, is it 10 doors?
I think it's six doors. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Article S6, see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate $15,000 to purchase and install two rooftop units at the Whitman Middle School.
So moved.
Second.
I believe this is an ongoing thing, they're replacing two and two and two to try to keep the costs down.
There's an air quality issue as well within the school?
Any other discussion? All those in favor? S7, see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate $5,600 to pay for costs of replacing two univents at the Whitman Middle School.
So moved.
Second.
I believe this is the same deal, they're replacing a couple and a couple and a couple.
That's correct.
Because I know, Mike, aren't there a bunch of them on that roof?
Yeah. This is not, this is a classroom univents, makeup units for the units.
Oh, okay, the univents that were made by Singer?
Yeah.
Same people who make the Singer sewing machine?
You got it. And again, parts aren't available. These are the worst two rooms that are being addressed right now.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? S8, see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate $125,622 to pay Whitman's share of the projected cost for the roadway repairs at the regional high school.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
That, we spent money last year in patching up certain areas of the roadway. The road continues to, you know, be heavily traveled, heavily used, and there are potholes and it's failing, and this would allow us to continue patching it for the. That, we spent money last year in patching up, uh, certain areas of the roadway. Uh, the road continues to, you know, be heavily traveled, heavily used, and there are potholes and it's failing, and this would allow us to continue patching it for the, uh.
And another note is, all expenses for the high school are assessed based on student enrollment. Whitman's enrollment is presently fifty-nine point eight-two percent of the student body of the region. Again, it breaks out to almost sixty, forty, so. Any further discussion? All those in favor? S nine, to see if the town will vote to raise an appropriate a hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and ninety-five dollars to pay Whitman's share of the cost to resurface the outdoor track at the high school. Estimated cost, two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Some moved.
Second.
All expenses for the regional high school are assessed based on student enrollment. Whitman's enrollment is presently fifty-nine point eight-two percent of the student body of the region. The track, excuse me, the track surface is starting to fail, and this again is another item that needs to be taken care of.
It's actually, it's, uh, putting a new surface of seal coating almost on it, and if we don't do it, and it continues, it's in layers, and if we go down to one more layer and it does fail, now we're looking at three quarters of a million dollars to replace the whole track.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Okay, thank you. We do not have any gifts to accept, so there's no big check coming. We do not have any field trip requests. Last week, we had subcommittee reports, warrant subcommittee?
No meds.
Nothing. Negotiation subcommittee hasn't met.
But I, I do wanna note that they're going to meet on the twelfth of March, but just the school committee subcommittee, there won't be a negotiation session after that. Um, that is the special town meeting in Whitman at seven-thirty. In addition to that, Attorney Wa had a conflict. We're working on new dates, and we'll get those too as soon as we.
Were both those dates canceled, I'm sorry? Or just one date was?
The date we have right now is the twelfth, and we'll meet at five, just us.
We will, okay.
Just us, Mike, but then we won't meet with WHEA afterwards, because we've got the special town meeting, and also Attorney Wa had a conflict. So we're working with Kevin and Beth to get new dates, and also with Andy Wa to get new dates. We'll get that out to you as soon as we have it.
Thank you.
Regional Agreement Committee, we have a couple of dates.
It's the nineteenth.
Nineteenth?
Yes.
Nineteenth at six o'clock.
Nineteenth?
Yes.
At six o'clock here in the library.
Those will also be placed on the warrant, but the Board of Selectmen actually puts on that warrant article for the regional agreement.
Yes.
Which they have the language, I sent the language to them today, so.
Okay. Regional Policy Subcommittee?
We had to cancel due to lack of power, and we will be reconvening on March twenty-first at five o'clock.
Facilities and capital improvement subcommittee met last week, they'll be meeting again.
Next week at six.
Next week. At, at six o'clock here in the library before the school committee meeting, and that meeting is open to all. We intend and encourage you to come.
Yeah, we didn't meet last week.
Yes, we did.
Yes, we did.
The twenty-eighth, yeah.
Yeah.
You were talking, yeah.
Yeah, you ran right into one minute and seven.
Was it last week?
Yeah.
Lots happen since.
Time flies.
See, this is what happens in a committee.
It was last month, too.
I got a question on that. How, how did the, um, Playground Committee make out?
They ended up canceling because we didn't have school. Um, talked to Beth, she just left.
What's the rescheduled date, do they?
I don't know, she was gonna check with John Riley, but, um, I, I talked to her just about it.
Next.
When is it? What time?
When does that item need to be in by?
Next Friday, but I will bring that to you. Um, I'm working on the Hanson one, so I'll bring them all to you next week.
Okay.
That's on there.
Legislative update, Mike, anything?
I think we touched on it earlier, just, they're in session, and, um, hopefully Josh's, uh, hundred-dollar, uh, chapter seven, he goes through. Josh has been a great advocate, as, uh, as Jeff. For us.
Anything else? Questions for Mike? Pilgrimage area?
We have two finalist candidates for the executive director position. Uh, one is our former chair and former Plimpton School Committee and Silver Lake Regional School Committee, um, member, Jason Frazier, and the other is from Falmouth, Dim, Dimna Thomas.
She's the, actually, the Assistant Superintendent in Abington.
Abington, okay. Well, she was, she is from Falmouth.
She lives on the Cape, yeah.
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 Um, we will be doing those interviews at our next monthly meeting, which is April fifth, and we commence at six P M.
Any questions for Mr. Boyce? And entertain a motion to adjourn?
Some moved.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Pray for no snow. We need to be in school.